Our late start. I was chatting. For the record, it is Tuesday, September 10th. It's five minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Mayor DeVeard.
Here. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, we do not have someone the latest in the community invocation, so I'll move to item four, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We're going to add on a seven C to tonight's agenda. It's going to be the citywide fee schedule and the solid waste fee schedule for a public hearing. Wasn't originally noticed on our agenda when published, sort of an internal who's on first with trying to get things uploaded to the Nova's agenda, which we didn't get it on the Agenda Manager, so it didn't make the published agenda. It was published in the Meridian Press, so that's the reason for the last-minute inclusion. It's just sort of a good faith snafu that it didn't catch the software on Friday. So if the council will allow, we'll add that citywide fee schedule and the solid waste fee schedule to the agenda as seven C. And with that, I would move we adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion as second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Council, under announcements, I, we do have a couple of things coming up. Of course, tomorrow is the nine eleven observance at all of our fire stations. Starting at seven forty-five, we will have a flag rising ceremony at Fire Station One. The ceremony starts at seven forty-four. So if you're going to Station One, you have to come one minute earlier than the other stations. Recovery Day, we have a breakfast recognition and celebration on September 12th at the Meridian Police Department at seven thirty. Meridian Business Day is Friday, the 13th. It's the best way to celebrate Fri- Friday, the 13th. It's at City Hall from eight AM to one PM. As Cincy is doing their rock-a-thon to benefit the Salvation Army. It's on Friday, September 13th. Just to remind you, usually after the rock-a-thon events, they do have fireworks. Those start at nine PM. And just a final reminder that MYAC, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council CPR Day at Dutchbrows is Saturday, September 14th, from nine AM to two at the Overland Franklin, Meridian Road, and Calderwood and Linder locations. We'd love you to go out and buy a coffee and learn hands-only CPR. It's a great way to refresh your CPR skills. So those are the announcements. Does anyone have anything they would like to announce?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I do have a few items from the Parks Department. First of all, reminder, the Parks Tour is tomorrow. So if any of you are signed up to do that, be at Discovery Park at five fifteen. We have a save the date, a grand reopening of Fuller Park is on Friday, October 18th at two, and the Ball Field will be named in honor of Charlie Roundtree at that time as well. And just a kind of update, the Community Block Party was, went really well. It was well-attended. They had a new little bark party area, which was a lot of fun. Did a lot of volunteers and a really good turnout. Got lucky with the weather.
That's awesome. Thank you. Did you have something to add?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Mylum. Okay, item six, future meeting topics, public forum. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, Carol Stanley has signed in.
Carol, thank you for joining us.
Mayor and City Council members, I am here representing myself and my walking partner. We have been walking around Meridian since about 2010 in the mornings. And first of all, we started, well, we noticed puncture vine. So that's our, our big concern. And so especially at this time of year, we started by trying to get puncture vine off sidewalks because we were concerned about children walking to school and also bike riders. And so we have, when we walk in the morning, we have a little bag that we carry with our leather gloves and all of our equipment to pull out and bag puncture vine. We also have a little brush that we sweep up the seeds. And sometimes we have, we have learned that grocery bags on your, not grocery bags, bread sacks on your feet work really well to walk all around and pick up the seeds. And so you should need to save your bread sacks and go out and walk where you want to pick up seeds, and they'll come right up with sticking to your feet that way. So we're, we would just like to have a community-wide effort to do something about all the puncture vine around town because we've been working for many years and this fall again, and we just kind of get tired and discouraged that there's so much to do. We thought maybe, maybe we need to have some education in the utility bills, or like there's a Facebook page with trash talk and recycling, and so maybe we need a weed awareness Facebook page so that everybody could talk about that in Meridian. So, you know, just any suggestions that anybody had, or, and we're, we've gone to code enforcement. We've, over the years, we've talked to weed and pest. But if you turn someone in at this time of year, weed and pest, you know, they're, the answer is to spray. But if you spray once the seeds are set, then you just kill the plant and all the seeds drop. And it's really hard to pick all that up when the plant has died. And so then you've just planted seeds for years to come. So at this time of year, you just need to pull out your plant with the seeds still there, sweep up the seeds and bag them and throw them in the garbage. That's what we do. So that's our concern.
Thank you. And Carol, thank you for your efforts over the last decade in raising awareness, because you definitely have raised the awareness of this issue. Carol's come to coffee with the mayor. She's come to town hall meetings. And she recently spoke at our Faith Ambassadors Council. We appreciate that you are a woman on a mission, both you and your walking partner. And let us see what we can do to partner with you and maybe having a goat head day type of event. We'll, we'll figure out something. But I appreciate that you bring solutions in addition to the issue that you have on your mind and appreciate that.
And I, and we do have a little paper like this that, with our ideas, that if you'd like to have a copy, we-
Yes, if you can give that to the clerk, we can get it to all the council members.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer.
It's kind of funny you bring this up. I, about a week ago, I bought an electric scooter, a bird-style one of my own, because I never knew if we were actually going to get them back again, but we do. But anyway, I bought my own, and so I've been riding it to work on occasion. And I've never really used the sidewalks in Meridian, even though I've been here my entire life until the last couple of weeks. And those things are everywhere. And so I've, I've been trying to figure out, like, how, at least on my route, can I improve this? So I'm, I'm looking forward to looking at what you have, and, and I'm in whatever I can help do to get rid of these stinking things, because I don't want to replace tires.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is under action items. Seven A is final plat, continue from August 27th on age 2019 dash zero zero six four. And this over to staff.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff is requesting that this item be vacated from the agenda tonight and be brought back at a later meeting night. There are still some outstanding easement issues along the property's southern boundary that need to be figured out before we go any further on this.
Okay. And what date did you want to continue to?
I would recommend it just be vacated from the agenda. And then when the applicant resolves these issues, then we just put it back on the, the next available council meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Sonya. Counsel, I would need a motion to vacate this from our agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that item seven A, age 2019 zero zero six four, be vacated from the agenda.
Okay, I have a motion as second to vacate item seven A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item seven B is a public hearing for age 2019 dash zero zero seven four. I will open this public hearing with, first with comments. Has, is this the first time anyone has been at one of our public hearings? Okay. So I'm going to just tell you the process so you know what to expect. We first open with staff comments. They introduce the application to the city council. Then the applicant will step forward. If they have anything they want to add, they have up to 15 minutes to introduce their application. It is then we open it up for public comment. There's three minutes. It's tracked on the screen at the podium, so you know where you are. And at that time, if you haven't finished, I'll ask you to summarize and wrap it up. After public testimony is taken, we then have an opportunity for the applicant to come forward with wrap-up remarks. They can address any of the statements or questions, issues raised during the public testimony. And at that point, council has an opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or any of those that provided testimony. I will remind all that there is an extensive public record that is online that city council also has had an opportunity to review prior to making their decisions. And that's where other agencies have a chance to weigh in as well. So with that, I will turn this over to staff with their comments.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Sonya.
Yes.
One, one comment. I have recused myself and passed Brighton applications for the sole purpose of one of their main builder partners in these communities is one of my main customers. In this case, this, this certain customer of mine is, will not be building in this proposed development. And because of that, I feel like in this case, I can participate in this discussion in an unbiased manner. I, I, Brighton, for the record, is, is one of my customers. We do business together, however infrequent, and they go through an extensive bidding process with every development that they, they go through. And sometimes I win, sometimes I don't. And other projects, I might even offer the opportunity to bid. And so with that said, I would like to put it out to my fellow council members to see if they have any concerns with me continuing with this dialogue.
Thank you, Mr. Burnt. Counsel, any concerns?
No.
We appreciate you stating that.
Yep.
Okay, with that, Sonya.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applications before you at this project are a development agreement modification, a preliminary plat, and a planned unit development. This site consists of 35.57 acres of land. It's owned R15 and is located at the southeast corner of West Chindon Boulevard, State Highway 2026, and North Tree Farm Way. This property was annexed last year along with the property to the east where the Costco side is proposed and included in a development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. A modification to the development agreement is proposed to update the conceptual development plan for this site. The existing and proposed plan is for a mix of single-family residential, attached, and detached units for seniors age 55 and older. The layout of the proposed development is the only thing that has changed. The existing plan depicts a central common area surrounded by building lots. The proposed plan depicts a gated community with three large, separate, active, and passive common areas dispersed throughout the development accessed by gated private streets. The applicant is also requesting to amend provision number 5.1.5 in the development agreement, which requires the property to be subdivided prior to issuance of any building permits to allow one permit for the community center to be issued prior to subdivision of the property. The proposed preliminary plat consists of 165 building lots and 13 common lots on 35.57 acres of land in the R15 zoning district, and is proposed to develop in two phases as shown on the phasing plan. A planned unit development is proposed for a mix of attached and detached age-qualified 55 and older dwelling units that incorporate a variety of housing types and setbacks unique to unit and site design. The development is proposed to be gated for security purposes and have private streets, alleys, and a common driveway for access to the units within the development. Deviations to the typical R15 building setback requirements are proposed, as shown and as noted in the staff report, and to UDC 11-6C-3B5, which requires alleys to be designed so that the entire length is visible from a public street. The applicant can't comply with this as the internal streets are private. Access is proposed via two gated private driveways from the adjacent collector streets, Tree Farm and Lost Rapids. Private streets, alleys, and common driveways are proposed internally for access within the subdivision. Qualified open space and site amenities are proposed in excess of UDC standards. A minimum of 10% or 3.56 acres of open space is required. The applicant is proposing 26.37% or 9.38 acres of land as common open space. Minimum of two site amenities are required. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot wide multi-use pathway within the buffer along Chindon. A pathway connection is proposed to the east to the commercial development for interconnectivity, and a community clubhouse, pool, and outdoor activity complex are also proposed. Noise abatement is required for residential uses adjoining a state highway. A six-foot wood fence on top of a four-foot tall berm is proposed. Wood fencing does not qualify as a sound attenuating material. Wall materials are required to consist of impervious concrete or stucco or other appropriate sound attenuating material. Monotonous walls are also not allowed and must vary in color and/or texture in accord with UDC standards. A revised plan is required with the final plat that is consistent with UDC standards, or the applicant may request alternative compliance for a substitute noise abatement proposal in accord with ITD standards and prepared by qualified sound engineer. Conceptual building elevations are proposed, as shown, for the single-family residential attached and detached units. Traditional alley-loaded homes and patio homes are proposed. All attached units are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. The commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat and the planned unit development. Mike Wardle and John Wardle, Brighton Corporation, testified in favor of the application. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation, in response to the staff report. The applicant is requesting a modification to condition number A3F in section eight to allow the developer to submit for alternative compliance to the noise abatement requirements consistent with UDC standards. And the applicant requests condition A13 in section eight is deleted that pertains to the block face exceeding UDC standards as an intersecting alley qualifies as a break in the block face. The issues of discussion by the commission as, as follows. The sound attenuating wall along State Highway 2026, and the applicant's request to allow alternative compliance as a means of compliance, as allowed by the UDC. Type and size of buffer proposed between the residential development and the future commercial development to the east where Costco is proposed. The width of the proposed alleys and the location of the pathway connection to the east. Commission changes to the staff recommendation are as follows. They did modify condition A3F as requested by the applicant to allow alternative compliance to the noise abatement requirements as allowed by the UDC. Deletion of condition A13 as requested by the applicant in regard to block face, and modification to condition A3A to require the applicant to work with staff to situate the pedestrian connection to the east in a location that makes the most sense. There are no outstanding issues for council tonight. Written testimony since the commission hearing has been received from Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation. He is in agreement with the commission recommendation. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Are you also in agreement with the changes that were made?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, any questions for staff at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Two questions, and maybe Mike can answer. I'll just plant the seat at least. On the staff report, page nine and 10, the two questions are with regards to the, the alternative compliance for the parking. There was comment about the, the narrow private street and the solution being some, some off-site parking provided on the, near the two open spaces.
Yes.
Where's that parking picked, the extra 14 spaces?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, counsel. That is in the conditions of approval, so the applicant will be revising the plan to accommodate the parking, and they have agreed to that.
Second, Madam Mayor, the second question was with regards to the noise abatement, and there was reference to the four-foot berm and the wood fence, but that's not acceptable, so there was-
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, counsel, the, the applicant just requested that it be specifically stated in the conditions of approval that they could request alternative compliance to that section of code. And the UDC does allow for a provision for alternative compliance, so staff is amenable to that request to add that language.
So what's the, what's alternative compliance to a wood fence? Maybe I'm not tracking-
I don't know. They haven't submitted their request for alternative compliance, but it is eligible for alternative compliance per the UDC. So maybe they can address at the hearing tonight. I'm not sure if they're prepared to address that tonight or not, but it's a staff-level director approval with alternative compliance.
Something other than the wood fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Meets ITD standards and, yeah, all that.
Thank you. Any other questions that you'd like? Would the applicant like to make comments?
Madam Mayor, council members, Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation, 2929 West Navigator in Meridian. I won't go back through, Sonya, would you bring up my slides though, because it specifically will address the questions that Councilmember Borton just brought up. Most of what I had proposed to show, Sonya has already shown, so I will not, okay.
Mike, our, our presentation isn't working up there. I'm sorry. I'll have to drive for you.
Can you go to slide number five, please? There you go, right there. This particular slide shows the items that we brought to the commission's attention and asked for some specific considerations. Councilmember Borton, you can see on the east and west sides of that where those additional parking spaces will be provided. And that was a, a good recommendation from staff, and we concurred with that. Also at the southwest, on the southwest curve, you'll see a yellow pathway that will be added. The original concept that was approved about a year and a half ago actually included a pathway there, but in the change of the layout, it kind of disappeared. It will be back there. And so the only real other issue is on the east side where condition 3A identified a general location of a pathway. And as we talked through that issue with the commission, they put in the language, since there was already an "or" statement in the proposed condition, that we just work with staff to find the best location for that that would work in context with the access to the commercial uses, specifically Costco to the east. We'll just note that Costco has a 25-foot landscape buffer on its side of the property line. We have a 35-foot on ours. So there's roughly 60 feet of landscaped open space with a fairly tall berm and a fence on that particular side. Now, with regard to the question on Chindon and the sound attenuation requirements of the code, as Sonya has noted, there is a, an alternative compliance provision in the code that gives us the opportunity to bring alternatives for consideration at the staff level. We did actually an analysis on the project immediately to the west of this, on the west side of Tree Farm Way, a fairly short segment. But we were actually given approval through alternative compliance to do a wood fence there because we actually, through a sound engineering analysis, showed that the, and Brighton builds a better standard fence than, than most wood fences that you'll find in the community. And in fact, tonight, Mr. Turnbull and Mr., the other Mr. Wardle are an eagle addressing some of that same question and have some examples of projects that we did 20 years ago that look wonderful even today, simply based on the standard. Well, anyway, that analysis that I just cited showed that the wood fence actually is a better sound attenuator than a concrete wall or a masonry wall or whatever, which simply moves that sound back and forth. We haven't concluded exactly what that's going to be because there's one other kind of a wild card in this whole question. You'll see along the north boundary of this, it doesn't say Chindon there, but that's obviously the, the big area of the north side of the property is between Chindon and the back of the lots. We have set aside a 60-foot wide strip through there that will give us, hopefully, far more than the four-foot berm that we had originally anticipated. We actually dropped a few lots out and moved those lots down so that we could get more elevation along Chindon. So there's some design considerations that we still have not completed. We're not in construction mode yet on this particular project, although this will be happening fairly quickly. It is a replication of our Cadence product in Paramount. And we're finding tremendous success and demand for that product for whatever reason seems to be an aging population that wants a little bit more freedom of walk and leave and not worry about their, their homes. So the recommendation that was forwarded to you from the council, or from the commission, was concurring with a few requests that we made and acknowledging some future decisions to be made as well. But I want to go back to one other concern. A statement was made, and Sonya, I'm going to ask you to go to slide seven and eight. Okay. She showed you some just architectural renderings of the product, but these actually are the Cadence products that have already been constructed in the Paramount project. The next slide, Sonya, shows the, the streets. They are not substandard or narrow streets. Your code actually allows a, in this type of a development, a 26-foot street, but we are developing these at 29 feet, which is actually, ACHD has a 27-foot standard now. They used to have 29 as their minimum with parking on one side. We're still building a 29-foot wide street with parking on one side. And those streets therefore are, are not narrow. It's kind of ironic, after we had the last hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, on my way home, I drove through the project, and I couldn't find any parking on the streets at all. People seem to be parking in their garages for some strange reason. But even if they were, it would be limited, and it would not impede the movement of vehicles. And so you look at the streets, internal and external, and there's really no significant difference. In all of our projects that we have developed in Meridian in recent years, we've used in the, the standard local street section of 33 feet, but that allows parking on both sides. We're doing 29 with parking on one, and so in- We're doing 29 with parking on one, and so in reality, we've got more passing space on those streets than you would have in a typical neighborhood subdivision. So we're excited about the product. We're excited about bringing this to Bainbridge. And we believe that the commission's recommendation and the slight modifications that they proposed are appropriate and ask for your consideration and approval as well. We'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're in the public testimony section. Mr. Clerk, are there any signups?
Madam Mayor, there were no signups.
Okay. This is a public hearing? Yes, sir. Come on up. You gotta wait and...
I've got my three-minute time left.
Oh, we just need it on the public record. If you'll please state your name and address.
Yes. Joseph Hammer, 6922 North Agrarian Avenue, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you, Joseph.
We're some of those aged persons that, and we've just moved here about five months ago. The one thing I haven't heard discussed at all is traffic. And that's just a general comment. We moved from the Seattle area and part of the reason for moving was we lived next to Microsoft and at five or six o'clock, you couldn't get out of our subdivision because you just had, for a couple hours. But Chindon is about as bad, it seems like, and there's just a lot of traffic. Is there any, in the staff recommendations or in the discussions or in the record, anything about traffic and mediation there or amelioration there of traffic and expanding streets or anything?
Yes, and that was part of the approval of the development.
Oh, okay.
And so all of that information was considered at that time, yes.
Okay.
And I will note that Chindon is scheduled to be widened and in the next year, I believe it should start, or I guess in 2020. So you'll start seeing that happening here soon.
Okay, all right. Well, that was the only comment I had.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, welcome.
Yes, sir. And that is an excellent question, though. Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Morris. Truly is. 4222 West Lost Rapids Drive in Bainbridge. I have no desire to increase costs for anybody. My only concern about what I've heard tonight on the proposal on the berm between the proposed housing and Chindon would be that it be somewhat maintenance-free. Wood's going to need to be stained or painted. That's going to need to be maintained. I don't know who incurs that cost, but just a thought there. I walk that park, Keith Byrd Park, every morning, right across the development, from the proposed development here. There's two bus stops there. Maybe this isn't the forum to address that, but it's a cluster every morning. A lot of it is due to the construction traffic going through there. There's still a lot of new homes being built. I watch the kids, I watch the parents park in Keith Byrd Park and the kids go across West Lost Rapids, the tiny guys, for their bus to pick them up coming that way. You've got construction traffic coming, people going and coming to work. It's, in my opinion, I would be concerned. I would be a hovering parent there with my kid, taking them across. There is another bus stop right in the southwest corner of that proposed development off West Lost Rapids where it turns off of Tree Farm into the development. There's another bus stop right there, and it's on the south side. That's the main means of egress and egress for people coming in and out of the development, including construction traffic. And the bus stops right there, and we've got parents who walk their kids to that corner. We have parents who drive and park along West Lost Rapids and, you know, in the bike lanes. It's just crowded and it's, and we got a bunch of kids there. So I don't know, I just, I don't know the suggestion, the best solution. My thought would be to bring the bus stops on the south side, right in front of Keith Byrd Park, so that we don't have that bottleneck getting crowded every morning and maybe not have the little tikes having to cross that street when there's, when there's traffic coming and going there. Some of it, most of it's respectful, most of it's residence, but every now and you've got a landscaper or some delivery that's somewhat in a hurry that I hate to see something bad happen there. So those are my observations about it.
Thank you, and I appreciate you sharing those observations and maybe with Lieutenant Brown can bring some of those comments back to the school district in terms of the bus stop locations. I, yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I appreciate your comments. I was there recently, probably about a week ago. I was there meeting another gentleman to do just a little quick delivery swap real quick, and that's where we met was just in Keith Byrd parking lot. And I saw exactly, when I was there, there were probably about four moms there waiting in their vehicles, and the kiddos got out and they ran out, you know, and I noticed that myself. I didn't notice it being too overly, no different than my own subdivision where I live, but I do think that we can maybe have a discussion as to maybe moving those drop-off points a little bit so that, you know, when construction and, or I should say, if construction is going on in this proposed subdivision, it doesn't turn into a bottleneck like what you're talking about. That could be a concern, I agree.
Thank you. Any further testimony? I would say ironically, we had a coffee with the mayor this morning at Cadence, and the gentleman that toured me around their clubhouse talked about their, the typical resident, and they used roads, 10 to 2. They don't want to be in the commuter traffic. They shy away from that. They talked about the average age of that community as it is. And you're right, we didn't see a whole lot of parking on the roads except for us because we, we had a great turnout this morning. So it was, I guess, ironic timing to this development, but I guess with these kind of densities, this is the lowest-impact development that we could have out there, in particular because of the kids and the safety aspect for bus pickup. Any further testimony from our public? Mr. Wardle, would you like to remark?
Madam Mayor, no particular...
Do you want to just state your name?
Yes, Mike, I'm sorry. Mike Wardle, Brighton Corporation.
Thank you.
I appreciate Joseph's first question and your response to that because in reality, it was the approval of this project in conjunction with the commercial at Ten Mile and Chindon that will enable at least three miles of Chindon to be widened by two lanes next year and another two miles of Ten Mile Road widened by two lanes. So some of those improvements are coming as a result directly of the developments being proposed. I don't have any solutions to the schooling issue, but I believe it's a very valid thing for someone to bring to the school district's attention on where they stage their busing and either encourage or discourage children from crossing the streets when they don't really need to. And also I would echo again the fact that we're not contributing to that school population and...
For the most part.
For the most part.
I guess that's an assumption.
Can't say that there wouldn't be a trophy family there somewhere, but would be very, very rare. But the reality is that this is, as you noted, a low, a low-impact type of a project and actually generates less traffic than any other similar residential community. So I appreciate the opportunity to respond, and again, if you have questions, I would answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Wardle. Counsel, any questions? Counsel, if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Roberts.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on item 7B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve item 7B, H2019-0074.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve item 7B. Any discussion by counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 7C was added to our agenda, and this was the citywide fee schedule, public hearing. Good evening, Brad. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. I just want to refer you guys to the public record. We met on the 20th. I had a presentation that went over all the fees, so if we could refer to that. I can stand for questions and also want to thank Councilman Borton, and I know Kavner's not here, but their efforts in legal and making this possible to happen tonight. So thank you. Appreciate your help despite my oversight. So with that, any questions you or any votes asked? So, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Counsel, any questions? Yes, Mr. Borton.
Briefly, Brad, I understand the process for today. It was published in the paper. We can receive public input.
Right.
But at the end of this public hearing, it'll be continued to next week for potential action.
Yeah, we published for two weeks saying we're having a public hearing today, and then we're continuing this to next week so we can wrap this along with all of the utility, not utility, you know, the trash and recycling rates, all in one. So we'll finish this next week.
The public will have two opportunities to provide...
Exactly.
...written or public comment. Good.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Borton. Thank you, Brad.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Seeing none?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I move that we continue item 7C, the citywide fee schedule to September 17th.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to continue this to the 17th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 8A is ordinance 19-1851. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, section 13-2-9B, regarding ejectment from city parks, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
If this ordinance read by title, would anyone like to hear it read in its entirety? Seeing none, counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1851 with suspension of rules.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve item 8A. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Counsel, any topics under item nine? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
We adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.